Hello and welcome to the Wilmington School Committee of April 11th. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with approval of minutes and warrants. I have on the table approval of minutes for March 28th, regular session. However, Julie, yes?
I just wanted to point out on, I don't know how many people caught this, but on page four, Tristan isn't here tonight, she's enjoying the sun in Florida, I think. On page four, right at the top, there's a typo. And it's, I think she started to write out a sentence and perhaps didn't follow through with the rest of the sentence. And because it's about me, I don't remember what I said, so what I was going to-
And it is a cliffhanger.
It's a cliffhanger, yeah, and I could read it into the record. It says, "Mrs. Broussard commented that Dr. Brandt had expressed interest in." But I'm, I quite honestly don't remember.
I'm dying to know.
So what I might recommend is that we hold off on approving this particular set of minutes until Tristan is back and perhaps can give us an edited copy at the next meeting.
I would accept that as a motion. Do I have a second? From Jen, all those in favor? All right, that is unanimous to table until the next meeting. All right, we're also seeking approval of donation of street hockey equipment. At the April 11th meeting, we will request your vote to accept a donation by the Boston Bruins and the Wilmington Fire Department of street hockey equipment with a value of $1,000 as part of their Community Fitness Initiative, BFIT, which focuses on providing fitness and dietary education to promote healthier living throughout the community. The note, donation is being given to the Shawshien Elementary School on behalf of Mr. Charles Taylor and the entire Wilmington Fire Department. We thank Mr. Taylor, the Boston Bruins, Chief Rick McClellan, and the Wilmington Fire Department for the generous donation to the Woburn Street School. That's interesting. And their support of the Wilmington Public Schools Wellness Program. Do I have a motion to accept? From Tom, second by Peggy.
Can we just get clarification, is it Shawshien or Woburn Street?
I know, I know that it's for the Shawshien.
Yeah, the letter says Shawshien.
The Woburn Streets, I believe that they donated to the Woburn Street last year.
Okay.
And that's probably why that is, that is in there. And the letter also specifies Shawshien. So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor? That is unanimous. All right, we also seek approval of the Wilmington Educational Foundation Curriculum Grants in the amount of $23.83 and 46 cents. And it's broken down as the following. Unique Learning for Life Skills Curriculum Subscription for the Wilmington Middle School, $502.93. Learning in a Whole New Light for the North and the West, $803.80. Yoga and Mindfulness Education and Programming for the Shawshien, $1,076.73. Do I have a motion to accept? Peggy, and a second by Manny, all those in favor? That is unanimous. All right, and now we have approval, seeking approval of warrants. G422, G423, R228, R229, R30, L48, L49, L50, FS38, FS39. Do I have a motion? Manny, second. Jen, all those in favor? That is unanimous. I'm seeking approval of warrants, payroll, 328, 2018. Do I have a motion from Julie, second by Manny? All those in favor? That is five in favor with one abstention, that being Peggy. All right, and warrants, CB13, CB14, do I have a motion? Peggy, Tom, second. All those in favor? That is five in favor, one abstention being myself. Warrants, sped 27, sped 28, sped 29. Do I have a motion? Tom, second by Peggy, all those in favor? That is, again, five in favor with one abstention being myself. All right, as in, as is our custom, we will, I guess it's not out of order, actually. We're jumping right into this. We're gonna enjoy a student presentation, Western Intermediate and Wilmington High School Student Science Project Presentation. Who will, who'll be presenting? Will it start with Dennis, Mr. Shaw?
Hi, everybody. This is, this is kinda neat. It's not gonna look like a big wow, wow thing when you see it, but it's the idea behind it that was fabulous. We were approached, I say we, myself, Mrs. McMiniman, and Kevin Walsh at the middle school were approached by the high school earlier this year to see if we'd be willing to, to participate in kind of a cooperative venture with the high school. Students in the physics class were given an alternative to taking the midterm so they could develop lessons. And then they could come to the schools and teach the lessons to, to middle school kids and to, you know, west and north kids. And they could get credit that way for the work they had done. And then, and the west students got the advantage of a viable science lesson being taught by the high school kids. So it was pretty cool. And it was thoroughly vetted. I had to go up to the high school one day, I can watch these guys do the lessons. I could dry run for the whole thing and everything else, so it was, it was fabulous. And it's the kind of a thing that I really love because it's that whole collaboration between younger kids, older kids in the district, all these different opportunities that kids have. So I'm gonna let the high school guys come up, introduce themselves and talk a little bit about, you know, the process. And then my guys will come up and talk about, I have a couple of shots of a couple of things that were going on that day.
Hi, guys.
So I'm Matt Boddy, I'm a junior, and I attended Western Intermediate School.
I'm Theo Burdy, I'm also a junior, and I also did attend Western Intermediate.
Which makes it even more fine by.
I'm Michaela DeRosa, I'm a senior at the high school, and I actually transferred from Everett, so I went to Everett Public Schools.
And I will say that she was in my brother's school. So keep it an open family.
The Shaw connection.
All right, now why don't you go first and tell us about it, yeah?
So for my lesson, I taught the students of the west, the fifth graders, about Newton's Third Law. So what I did was I made a presentation. And then I also did a lab where the students would flip pennies and see how much it affected, the amount of pennies, how it affected, how much moved off the end. And so I made a worksheet with that, and we went over the worksheet. And what we did during the lab was we walked around and helped the students if they had any difficulty on how to do it, or if they weren't doing something right, and we would help them fix it so they can get the right answers.
So Nick, why don't you, why don't you step up to the mic there? Tell us a little bit about what this experiment, how it was for you. Let me, let's see, are these easily adjustable?
Is it on?
Yeah, go ahead, dude.
We had to flick the pennies through the two rulers and see how far they went to-
Nick, did it make a difference how many pennies that there were?
Yeah. The, um, when there was more pennies, they didn't go as far, but when there was less, they went further.
And which one always moved?
Uh, the front one, the first one.
Yep, and then which one moved on the far end?
Um, the last one.
The last one, always moved, yes. What was happening to the energy? It was getting one from one to the end, one into the other.
Slowed down.
Slowed down a little bit, and it was getting transferred?
Yeah.
Awesome, awesome. Thanks, Nick. All right, Theo. Can you collect yourself, I'm starting to pick it up for you, good.
I think it's fine, I can talk a lot enough. So for the kids, I also made a presentation along with Matt and Michaela, and I taught them about Newton's First Law. And I was also able to conduct two experiments for the kids, and they also were able to try them too. I took a tablecloth and I had a ball on top of it, and I slipped it underneath, and they all thought it was fun, and I all let them try. So we really got to show like our skills and our understanding of physics through the presentation. It was a really fun midterm, honestly, the best midterm I've ever taken, yeah. It was really fun, so I think the kids enjoyed it.
Sure. All right, Jason, you said you liked this one, so.
You liked this one.
Um, I have no idea how half of them did it. I probably would've flung, mine probably would've went out the window. Some kids just had the magic touch, I don't, I really don't know.
So what were they trying to do when they pulled the cup?
They were trying to keep it on the table.
Keep what on the table?
The balls on the table. Um, and if they fell off, you lose, I guess.
Which law was this, do you know?
The First Law.
Yeah, good job.
Good job. Thanks, Jason.
So I taught the kids Newton's Second Law, and with them I did a presentation, and I also did a lab. And in this lab, we took like pancake mix and chocolate, and hot chocolate mix, and we dropped rocks on them to see like which rock made a deeper hole. And so we just took three rocks and dropped them, and then I used a spoon to get it out of the mix, and they had fun doing it. And we walked around and we like helped them out and make sure, like measure which one was deeper, made sure all of the rocks were dropped at the same height and stuff like that. And, yeah, that was pretty much it.
So these guys will talk about, they like that one because it made kind of a mess.
Yeah. It made the most mess out of all of them.
What'd you like about it? Besides the messy butt?
I'm messy.
Yeah, we are messy. Did it matter what size the rocks were?
No, they were, or yeah, they did. The more weight, the more it, the sand would pop up.
Okay, excellent, Nick. How about you, Nick?
The bigger ones, um, the sand and, um, pancake mix went, not cocoa, went higher. And on the smaller ones, it didn't go as high.
Awesome, awesome. Thanks, guys. So they were collecting data through the whole thing. And then what was nice for the final wrap-up was the high school students actually had a great set of worksheets that the students had to do. And it was, and it was actually for the students to do them and you guys to collect them and bring them back so that they could look at the sheets and see if the students actually learned what they hoped they would learn. And that's how they got the credit for the project. So it was, it was really fabulous, you know? And you guys are juniors, so you know we're gonna do this again next year.
Oh, yeah.
It was excellent, you know what I mean? It was, it was easy to pull off, and we hope to do it even more, you know, with, with, with different activities and different classes, so. So there you go, there's our Western High School students that did a really nice job.
Before you guys, before you sit down, do we have any questions, comments from the membership? Manny?
So the high school students, was it different schools that were involved?
Just the high school and the Western Intermediate.
There were more than these three guys involved, there were more high school students involved.
Okay.
So it was a team that came to the west, a team that went to the, to the north, a team that went to the middle school, and did different things.
So how many kids from, from, how many total kids were involved?
Our class was ten, so we split up into four and three.
Okay, cool.
And then at the west, like you know, they did it for two separate classes at the west. So this is like 50 kids got to do this. And then I think at the north, they did the same thing, at the middle school the same thing, so like several classes got to, you know, try it out and see how it goes.
Very cool. Nice job, guys. Nice job.
Jason, you're welcome, because I know you can talk all night, you sure you're all fine?
I can talk all night.
All right, thanks, guys.
Peggy?
I just had one question. We always talk about what the kids get out of it, but what do you people get out of it for coming down here with the little kids?
Well, I had a lot of fun. I love working with kids, and that's what I want to do when I get older. But we also were able to like show how much we know about physics and getting able, being able to like interact with younger kids, especially in our own town, which is really cool. Don't get to usually do that, so I had a great time doing it.
You're such role models, and it's really, this, I love this kind of education. It's very important.
And no midterms.
Congratulations. And no midterms. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very, very much. Do you want the gavel?
We're good with that.
All right, moving on, we are, I'm gonna have a report from our student representative. Joe?
Good evening, everybody. So I'd like to start off with, senior internships are starting tomorrow. About 30 to 40 kids from the high school will be going off with different businesses. I know some kids are going to the Wilmington Police Department and other municipalities over the Commonwealth. And they'll learn valuable skills, real world life skills, in the job and field that they're interested in studying in college and after college. Today, students from Sports and Entertainment Marketing with Mrs. Dunlap, who's one of the business teachers here at the high school, went to Gillette Stadium as a sort of end of the year field trip. They were able to look at the marketing that the Patriots do for their team and for actual the Gillette Company. And they were able to tie it into their curriculum and what they learned throughout the year. Tomorrow, students from WHS will be jet setting off to Europe, to Athens, and eventually later on to Italy. They have a great opportunity to immerse themselves in the cultures of these two very historic countries and the vast culture that they both bring to the tables. They'll be attending historical locations such as the Vatican. And I believe they're also going to the Colosseum through Rome. And they'll be representing Wilmington over there as well. Last night, the Wilmington High School History Department had their annual freshman history fair. Freshmen were chosen by their teachers and by their peers in their classes to represent their class at the freshman history fair. I believe it's two kids from each class, one chosen by the teacher, one by the peers, and they bring their projects down to the library during school for the students to come and look at, and after school for parents and families to come and look at. All the students, all the freshmen, I'm sure had great projects, they do every year. But it's a great honor to be able to go to the history fair and present your project to the school. And over the past few weeks, the Local Heroes Club has been posting biographies and snippets about Wilmington veterans. Students are able to walk around and read these biographies. I actually believe there's an article right over there on the window, put up by the local heroes. They're able to read these biographies about the men and women of Wilmington and their sacrifices for our country and for our freedom, and to make sure that they're never forgotten forever. I believe that one is actually about the Vietnam War. And I've seen a couple World War II articles and biographies and Gulf War and so on and so forth. And I think that's very important, that we don't forget their sacrifices. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe. Any questions, comments from the membership? Thank you, Joe, as always, outstanding.
Have a great evening.
All right, we are now moving on to our winter athletic sports wrap-up. Of course. Thank you for joining us, Tim.
Absolutely, thank you. Happy spring.
Well, maybe.
We had a great winter sports update. We offered on the varsity level, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, cheerleading, boys' ice hockey, girls' ice hockey, wrestling, winter track for boys and winter track for girls. So every team participated in community service, which you know is kind of one of the pillars that we build the program on, which was fantastic. Boys and girls' basketball were part of the Coaches vs. Cancer organization that was run throughout the Middle Sex League, so they raised money towards the American Cancer Society. Boys' basketball made the state tournament, first time in four years. And girls' basketball also made the state tournament and went all the way to the North semifinals under first-year coach Jess Robinson in the WHS faculty. So they upset the number one seed Lynn Classical High School and just came up short in the state semifinals, which was awesome. Boys' ice hockey made the North semifinals, first time in five or six years as well. So they had a great, great season. Indoor track, Alexi Luna was Middle Sex League MVP, and she was also a Division Four state champion, which was amazing. And on the boys' track side, John Kenny set the school record in the 55-meter dash, which was fantastic, so. You know, all the teams improved since last year. You know, our cheerleading team led all teams with community service. I mean, they've given go-in since the summertime. They volunteered at the Fun at the Fourth, Police Night Out, Wilmington Farmer's Market, helped out with Wilmington Pop Warner, Wilmington Tree Lighting. They did a Pop Warner Night as well. So wonderful to see our cheerleading team kind of leading all teams in community service. And they excelled in the gym as well. They finished state runner-up in Division Three and went to Dallas, Texas for the Nationals. And it was a great educational opportunity. I had the chance to go along as a chaperone and had a great experience and with a great group of girls and, and parents as well. So they came back with the sixth place championship trophy at the Nationals in Dallas, so.
That's tremendous.
Yeah. And thank you for the approval for them to go. They really appreciate it and had a great opportunity traveling out of the state, so. Happy to answer any questions?
Julie?
It's great to see the kids involved in the community service. I think that's a wonderful addition to our athletic programs. Is the community service that they participate in, is that in addition to the required hours for graduation?
No, I'll, I'll give them credit towards that. But you'll see, most of the kids end up doing well above that.
I would think so, yeah.
In addition?
Yeah.
So right now, it's been a popular time to get that form signed, so I've had a lot of visitors coming in and out.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it does count towards those hours.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yes, Peggy?
I have two things. The first one is, the people who won, who, you know, succeeded really well, are they underclassmen or seniors?
It's a wide variety. I mean, we had 13 Middle Sex League All-Stars. You know, probably a majority upperclassmen.
And so they'll be available to do that next year, too?
Most of the underclassmen will be coming back, for sure. So, you know, I think hopefully we keep improving and bring back. But, you know, one of the athletes, student athletes I mentioned, you know, he didn't start out at Wilmington High. He went to a private school and, and came back and was a thousand-yard rusher on the football team and then, you know, won the state or broke the school record for indoor track, so. You know, it's great to see, you know, maybe they make that decision from eighth going into ninth. But then, you know, for a wide variety of reasons, it's great to see kids come back, especially if they're performing on the playing surfaces and, and helping out as well, so. You know, I'd, I'd like to expect that with the success that the teams had this year, you know, hopefully we'll retain a lot more eighth grade kids going into ninth grade. Maybe kids that left the district will come back as well, so.
I have one other thing, and I don't want to take you by surprise with it. And if you can't answer it, then fine, for the next meeting or something would be great. Because I did ask about having it, I had asked Paul if he could have you talk about this. I've been approached by some people who want to have a petition, who want to bring, to bring a sport that we don't have. Is there a rule, how do you, do we have anything on that? I don't remember anything coming up about it. Whether we would allow that or the MIAA allows it, or how do you get, or whether we want it, or how do you get a new sports team?
Sure, yeah. There's not a formal policy, and that's the same in pretty much every school district. You know, what you look at is, you know, is there a certain amount of student need, and then-
Oh, I should clarify, you know what? It's swimming.
Swimming, okay.
Was one of the ones.
Yep, yep.
Then we don't have a swimming pool.
Right.
Supposedly there's a way for you to connect with another community?
Yep, no, I was presented with the petition not too long ago and met with the two residents who kind of started the petition. So we had a really nice meeting. And, you know, certainly if we can add another sport, especially like swimming, that kind of gives a different range of students the opportunity. You know, that's, that would be something I'd be all in favor of.
And for the people who use the rink and they, for ice skating, is there anything, because we do have a rink here in town, is there anything we could do for that? For kids, girls who particularly-
For figure skating?
For figure skating.
Yeah. Uh, you know, I know there's a club or an organization that runs out of restuccia on their own. I was approached by one student about starting a formalized club. And I did some research on it, and it's through U.S. Figure Skating Affiliated Schools. And there are only 28 in the whole country that sponsor it at the high school level. And only eight Massachusetts public schools that sponsored it. And I reached out to all those schools, and only one or two were aware that they were on that list. So it was, you know, I think when families or whoever registered, they checked the box that it was school-sponsored, and it was indeed not school-sponsored, so. You know, that's where, you know, it was a little bit of liability that we had to consider with adding that club.
So if people wanted to get more involved and wanted to push this forward, I don't want to cause problems, but is there any way they would do it? Or is it better, we, we just can't, something we just can't do?
No, certainly, I think the sign of a successful athletic program is if we're able to add sports. You know, certainly I'd love to. The school I was at before had swimming, it's a wonderful sport. You know, it, it really comes down to can we support it financially? And that's where, you know, historically in the past, the last sports we added were Boys and Girls Lacrosse about 10 years ago. And those were self-funded for the first two years. However, those, lacrosse is a much less inexpensive sport to start than swimming. So, you know, it would be a tall task for the parents that are interested to maybe self-fund it on their own for two years. I'm certainly not doubting that they could raise the funds to do that. But certainly if it's a sport that we want to consider and we want to add to the program, you know, I think it starts with the school committee and superintendent to see if there's a way we could make sure it happens, so.
So we'll wait a little while here. We won't hand it to Glenn the first day.
But certainly, I'd love to, to add another sport and especially a sport like swimming. I think it's a great opportunity for students to get involved and, you know.
I think we have a number of kids who swim outside, and they do it on a regular basis, but they have to go all around.
Yeah.
It's too bad we couldn't get them affiliated with Shawshien Tech because that we, that is partly our school.
Right, right. Yeah, I did, I did reach out as far as a cooperative team is when two schools combine. However, it has to be, if one school doesn't have enough numbers to sustain the program on their own. So I did call over to Shawshien, they have 78 students in their swim team, which is a very large number, so. Unfortunately, we could not co-op with them. And the same goes for a lot of our neighboring towns. I checked in with Tewksbury, Reading, Woburn and Winchester already co-op. North Reading wasn't available. I wish we had a smaller neighbor to partner up with to start out. But, you know, Burlington High School also swims out of the Shawshien Tech pool.
Really?
Yep. So, you know, that, that could be an angle too, as well. Their numbers are, are doing okay as far as sustaining their own program, but that could be an avenue we could explore as well, so.
Thank you, it's good to see that you're already on this.
Yeah, no, you know, it came up a couple times last year, a couple times this year, and then certainly with the petition, you know. It's great to see the residents care about a program and they've been great to communicate with and work with, and, you know.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Julie?
So I have a question on the flip side.
Yes.
For the spring season, how many teams do we have where we wavered kids onto the teams?
From a middle school waiver?
Yes.
Yep, for a middle school waiver, in the spring, we have softball. We have a waiver for seventh and eighth graders to play on the JV softball team. And boys' tennis as well. Same thing, seventh and eighth grade to play on the varsity team.
Okay.
So without, without the waiver for boys' tennis, we wouldn't have been able to field a team. So we certainly needed those middle school kids. And then for softball, you know, last year we had enough for a varsity team. But we needed that middle school waiver last year to have a JV team as well, so.
So at what point would we make a decision as a community that perhaps that sport is not as popular as it was, say, 10 years ago? We're still a pretty small community, so with all the opportunities that are available for our kids, things get stretched pretty, pretty thin. We just don't have the population for it. So at what point, or would we ever say, you know what, we don't have enough for a JV team, sorry, but we don't?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think if it ever got to the point in any sport where the varsity program didn't have enough.
Yeah.
But then for this year, for softball, we actually were able to field a freshman team as well. So you know, with-
So there's younger kids.
Exactly, with the support from school committee to give that middle school waiver, it kind of, you know, generated some interest and we're able to offer three levels for softball, which is fantastic, so. You know, there are no varsity sports that are in jeopardy at Wilmington High, which is great. We have healthy numbers in all the varsity programs. And across the Middle Sex League- And, uh, across the Middle Sex League, not too many schools offer, uh, freshman-level programs. And, you know, we offer quite a wide variety of freshman teams as well, so, uh, which is great.
Great, thank you.
Excellent.
Tim, thank you very...
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Uh, our next order of business is the FY seventeen financial audit. Yes, Frank, would you take us through that?
Sure. You have in your package a copy of the audit results from Roselli, Clark and Associates. They're certified public accountants. The school district, uh, engage their services as they have in the past. Each school district in the Commonwealth is required to have an audit done on the end-of-year financial report. So they reviewed last year's financial report, the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Uh, the purpose in doing this audit is to assist the Department of Edu- Education to make sure that school districts have done what they should have done and complied with the rules and regulations of the department's, um, end-of-year report. They completed their audit. They had two exceptions. Uh, one is that the civic activities and community services expenditures should have been reclassified on Schedule One from one line to the next. It was the very next line and it was on, in a, uh, schedule that has twelve columns. I inadvertently put it in the wrong line and they said, just move it to the line right above that. So we have done that and, uh, we filed an amendment with the Department of Education for that particular point that they, they brought up. And the second issue that they brought up was that there is a municipal expenditure, uh, report as part of this particular, uh, end-of-year audit. And what it means is that, um, there are some expenses that the municipality makes directly for the school district. So for example, you may have, uh, health insurance or property insurance claims, or you may have expenditures for, uh, maintenance of fields, parks, things of that nature that the, that the town takes care of, and then they report it on this particular end-of-year report. And for years, the methodology that we've been using has been consistent on the town's part. However, there is, uh, a point that they make, and that is that we should have a written agreement which shows how those allocations take place. I have met with the, uh, town accountant, Mike Morris, and we have a document that's almost ready, should be ready pretty soon. And, uh, once we have that agreement, then we'll be in compliance with this particular issue. So those are the two issues that they raised in this audit. And, uh, I think it's a very, uh, it's a very good audit. They, they took their time, collected all the data. This is really one of their specialties. They do municipal auditing and, uh, doing the end-of-year report audit is, is a specialty of theirs. So very pleased with the results of the audit.
Say so. Any comments, questions? I would just say, yeah, with, with, with what I read here, you guys did a great, fantastic job, as always.
Thank you.
All right. Our next order of business is public comments. Does anyone wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to subcommittee reports. Anyone? Yes, Julie?
I just have a question. It's not, um, are any of my colleagues planning to attend the Day on the Hill sponsored by MAS C? That's on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth.
I probably shouldn't speak to her, but for her, but I'm pretty sure MJ has, does plan to attend.
She does plan to go. Can we find out from her who she's planning to meet with and what she's planning to discuss? If she's going to represent us? I think that might be helpful. And she's not here, so can't ask her tonight, but perhaps she could just share out, FYI, this is my plan.
It's reasonable?
Yeah, I thought so.
Hey, anyone else? Peggy?
Um, I just wanted to announce that, um, we're back on schedule and the PAC meeting is going to be tomorrow night in here in the library at six-thirty. And that, that's the business meeting, but anyone is welcome to attend. And they really like if other people, they have a small little group and they're very active. And so hopefully, somebody else, a few people might, more like, might like to come and attend. And the other part of it is, um, they're preparing some of the things that they might be doing coming up, so that's good to have a part in that. And, um, should I do this? We did, um, the meal charge policy, we changed. Is that under this part right now?
Sure. Uh, well, you give an update. We're not ready to approve or...
No, no, just gonna give an update.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, okay. Um, we worked tonight, Jen and myself and, um, Frank and Mary Palin, and, um, we went over the meal, new meal charge policy. Um, the purpose of this policy is to ensure compliance with federal reporting requirements of the USDA Child Nutrition Program, as well as to provide oversight and accountability for the collection of outstanding student meal balances. The provisions of this policy pertain to regular-priced school meals only. The school committee will provide a regular meal to students who, um, forget or lose their, forget to bring their lunch or lose their lunch money. So people are not, we're not saying no to kids that you can't get it. What we'll do is Frank will have, uh, get a copy of this for us, the agreed-upon copy, and put it in our packets for next time. And then we'll read that and we'll wait, uh, we, um, for the next meeting and then we'll, oh, okay that if that's, uh, everybody's got it okayed. And if, when you read it, if you have any questions, I'll send it to Frank. He'd be very helpful for us. Okay? Anyone have any questions about that? Okay, thank you, that's it.
Anyone else? Jen?
Um, I wanted to, I think the STEM Fair is also tomorrow evening from six to eight, so I just wanted to...
Yeah, unfortunately.
I know, so there's a conflict there with the CPAC meeting, but that may, I'm not sure that'll affect attendance either direction, but I just wanted to point that out. And that's at the middle school. And then I just, um, was asked to make a reminder about the, the WEF Grant Programming Lip Sync, which is on April twenty-seventh at seven P.M. for ten dollars a person. The deadline to register for that is for thirteen, so this Friday is the deadline to register for that.
Anything further? All right, well, tonight is, uh, April eleventh. Our next meeting is April twenty-fifth. That is our last meeting before the town election. And one of our members who has chosen not to, uh, run for another term is not going to be able to make our April twenty-fifth meeting. So we'd like to, uh, recognize Manny Mullis. Thank you for your service for six years and present you with a token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
This plaque is presented to Manny Mullis in honor of his dedicated commitment, commitment to the students of the Wilmington Public Schools for service on the Wilmington School Committee, two thousand twelve through two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. It's been an honor to serve in the committee.
A few words, Manny?
Um, no, it's, uh, just, you know, it's been, it's been an honor. It's been fun.